What's up y'all? It's not a lot of people guys. It's not a lot of people out here. I know I see the news right there. See what news companies is right here. News out here guys. The news is in the building. Get out. The news is in the building. And of course, the eagle has landed. This is the card we signed up for?
Yes.
To speak up? Is this a speak up card right here?
Yes.
Got you. What are we turning this card into? Excuse me. What are we turning this card into?
That's a good question. I'm not sure. I have to take it for you if you're done.
Okay. What's your name and badge number though?
My name?
Yeah.
Lieutenant Melissa Ramirez.
Any number?
Four five five three two eight four seven.
Thank you. Compton Hall meeting guys. That's where we at right there, Los Angeles Sheriff, Compton Hall meeting. They're gonna talk about... Oh man, look at this guy over there. So here we are guys, Compton Sheriff's, Los Angeles County guys. I know what they're gonna talk about today. They're gonna talk about the takeover stuff and all that kinda stuff. On the briefing, on the poster that I posted, where they stated so. Well yeah, I'ma speak up, believe me. I'ma speak up for my community. I'ma speak up for myself, you know? Or anything for my community man. I always gotta make sure whenever this officer is doing something bad out there man, they gotta identify. They cannot just be holding numb, you know? You guys see Lieutenant as soon as I walked up, she got my paper and I told her, "Man, identify. What's your name and badge number?" That's the name of the motto here guys. Identify yourself. As a public servant, you gotta identify yourself. Real simple. But people probably know guys. Hell yeah, they probably know. Apparently about to turn it in live guys. I don't know bro. I don't know why so many cops, you know? I know that they posted the flyer. You know, they sent me the flyer and it's in Compton, so some of these sheriffs be trolling out there, you know? Sometimes you gotta speak up for the community, especially around the community guys, you know? Very important. Rincó de Mayo. Yeah, well they're gonna be talking about all that kinda stuff today though guys. Make sure you guys share like, 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 come on. Guys, fifty-four people in here, eighteen people out. Could get better than that. Ain't nobody walking up to the boss. Straight outta Compton man. Hi there, my boy guys. Compton Station Town Hall guys, exactly what we're doing today. Holding these deputies accountable. They know that we the community, we out here guys and we gotta make sure that when we guys use deputies for their name and badge number, they gotta identify man. Cause like I said man, they get pulled over by so many hunky-doki shit all the time in the community all the time, so. Don't know no. Hey Tommy Wood, yeah I appreciate you. Finally pulled up Tommy Wood. Finally saw you man. There Tommy Wood in the house guys. Good to meet you there guys. It was real good to meet you man. Real, real good to meet you. Tommy Wood is in the house guys. You know, that was one of the first guys that ever, that ever really I saw a long time ago that I've heard about it on S T V chat guys, so. And Tommy Wood though is a good guy man. Much love brother, damn hell yeah. You already know man. Who got to bring their own man? Yeah, actually they did. Nah, they actually like, she says. There ain't no, there ain't no none of that, so. Chingadera, what's up my boy Chingadera, the great one, Jeff Ham, Downey, everybody guys. Appreciate you guys. They about to start the meeting in five minutes guys. How these guys in the back look? Check out these guys in the back there. They wanna stand behind me, they're gonna be watched guys, wait. There you go. There you go. There you go. See that? They got the hell up outta my back. I know, look at, look at this. There's a ring right here though. Look at that. I didn't even notice that they had it, I got to play there. It's a made home town maybe, but I guess it's for the community. Man, big kids right here boxing, stuff like that, so. Pretty good posters look man. There's a Chavez, Muhammad Ali. You know? Pretty good people up there man. Martin the King out there guys, hell yeah. You know, you can never now not have the king man, you know? It's one number, one thing. Got the news over here look. Got everybody right here look. Newsin' everybody. But the eagle is here guys. The big dogs in town guys. Yeah, she got pecked right away guys, dude. People pulled up. It's gonna be a crazy event guys, a bunch of people here. Feeling free what they're gonna talk about here. That's crazy Eagle. That's crazy Tommy Wood. And everybody in the back guys, look. And like crazy look. What the Town Hall meeting guys right here? If they didn't have my mask, I could put the handles through and it'll be dope. It's all about accountability guys. I say all the time, you know? I mean apparently it is. I mean, if you guys see the... I thought they were having like at the city hall, you know what I mean? But nope. Not the city hall man. We got all the guys right there, look. All the Yarones right there. Yarones, they about to start. Hell yeah. Hell to the yeah, yeah. They don't bother me no more, you know? Kinda used to this kinda bullshit. Electric bills, so stay calm man, don't be a Yarone. Learn.
We're gonna get started in about one minute. Good evening. My name is Captain Terrence Bell. That's spelled with T E R R E N C E B E L L. Now I'm from the Compton Sheriff's Station. Thank you everyone for attending the Compton Station's Town Hall on Street Takeovers. At this time, I want to recognize my Division Chief Bobby Watch, my Commander Rick Mejia, my Operation Lieutenant Melissa Ramirez. And I appreciate their efforts and assisting Compton Station with the resources of the Sheriff's Department to combat illegal street takeovers. I want to recognize and commend the men and women of Compton Station, our assisting Sheriff Stations within our division, the California Highway Patrol, especially Captain Joe Zeezie, and our investigative bureaus to combat this issue. Now I wanna talk about a little bit of the history of street takeovers. Within the last ten years, sideshows and/or street takeovers have become a prevalent throughout Angeles County area. With the growth of social media platforms to promote, organize, and distribute information pertaining to illegal sideshows or street takeovers, this activity, often these events result in injury, traffic collisions, assaults, vandalism, and the purpose of obstructing traffic, traffic and driving reckless, reckless. Some of these street takeovers, they do maneuvers such as burnouts and dump notes. Participants do not comply with law enforcement with law enforcement's orders to disperse or vacate intersections of freeways. Participants actively block marked law enforcement vehicles in pursuits of other suspects or co-conspirators. Participants vandalize law enforcement vehicles and assault law enforcement officers attempting to make lawful arrests of reckless drivers and other criminals. Over the past two years, the City of Compton and unincorporated areas service by Compton Station has experienced a multitude of illegal street takeovers and Sunday cruisers, which has also resulted, resulted as a street takeover. On April sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, between the hours of one A M and three A M, Compton Station received six calls for service for street takeovers. One in particular at the intersection of Alondra Boulevard and Central Avenue in the City of Compton. This gained national media attention. Numerous participants and spectators of the street takeover event engaged in felony vandalism and the burglary at the A M P M Mini Mall. Although street takeovers are common in the City of Compton, in the City of Compton, it was unprecedented to have six events in that timeframe. Compton Station deputies responded to each event and the incident at the A M P M Mini Mall located at Alondra Boulevard and Central Avenue. There, there is an active investigation into identify the suspects in this crime and to arrest them for their felonious behavior. On April twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, approximately at three A M, Compton Station deputies received a call for service regarding a street takeover at the intersection of Rose Pants Avenue and Central Avenue. Deputy personnel were successful disbanding the event.
I don't like them being on my background.
However, several individuals attempted to burglarize a nearby business but were unsuccessful in gaining entry into the business. Again on April twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, between the hours of two P M and eight P M, Compton Station deputies engaged in proactive enforcement of the Sunday cruisers on Santa Fe Avenue between Artesia Boulevard and Greenlea Boulevard. Multiple citations were issued for various vehicle code violations. Now some may argue the Sunday cruisers are a mature group of individuals gathering for a social event. Despite this argument, the Sunday cruisers have engaged in, in the performance of exhibition of speed, doing donuts in the street, double park, vandalism, illegal dumping, battery, and other penal code violations. The Sunday cruisers moved to Rancho Dominguez on Broadway between Redondo Beach and Alondra Boulevard. Compton Station and California Highway Patrol conducted enforcement. We cited drivers, towed several vehicles for vehicle code violations. On April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, Compton Station received numerous phone calls, excuse me, numerous calls for service for street takeovers between the hours of midnight to, to three A M. All of the calls for service were SWAT. So that's pretty much bogus calls for service. Through proactive patrol efforts, approximately at three A M, and at the intersection of Alameda Street and El Segundo, deputies identified vehicles preparing for a street takeover. A vehicle pursuit occurred, one suspect was arrested, and felony charges were charged and his vehicle was towed. Eleven individuals were cited for spectating totaling an amount of eleven thousand dollars. So each site that we cited these eleven individuals, they received a one thousand, uh, one thousand dollar, uh, fine for, for the penalty. This past weekend, on April twenty-eighth through the thirtieth, Compton Station received zero calls for service for street takeovers. Proactive vehicle enforcement was still conducted by the Sheriff's Department and California Highway Patrol. The Sunday cruisers set up briefly on Broadway. However, the California Highway Patrol along with the Compton Station uh, men and women quickly responded, cited, and towed the participants involved in this, in this incident. Now we're continuing to urge the community to notify Compton Station if a street takeover is occurring or is in a preparation phase. Compton Station will continue to collaborate with assisting agencies, the City of Compton, the County of Los Angeles, and the citizens of each to develop solutions to increase public safety. We are committed to eradicating street takeovers and we continue to see, you will continue to see proactive enforcement. Now I'm gonna start with a quick video. I'm gonna show you, uh, direct your eyes to the board right here. And we're gonna show a quick video of some of the past enforcement. Now that concludes the video presentation. Uh, I know that you came in and you were provided a, a card if you had questions. Uh, we are gonna open up to, uh, to the audience to ask questions, but we're gonna read off the questions first from the cards that you provided. Then if, if, if possible, we will be able to take, uh, questions from, I think, online. So let's start with some of the questions. Lieutenant, too?
Um, when can we expect change? And see results of progress in place with that, the legal street places during the summer?
Well, as I stated a couple of weeks ago, uh, obviously the, the incident at the A M P M gained national attention. Uh, based on that, the resources from my Division Chief and my Commander, they allowed me to have more deputies come into the, the area. So with, with the Sheriff's Department being a, a larger, uh, law enforcement agency, you're, we're able to handle situations such as this and, and pull in resources. So that's what we did. We pulled in some, some resources from other stations and based on that, we utilized those, those resources and put them in, uh, you know, in key assignments. Especially on weekends when the, the street takeovers are occurring. So for the past weeks, we've had those resources out here. As I stated earlier, we had one, the day, the weekend after the incident on, at, uh, at the A M P M Mini Mall. That was just one street, one street takeover incident. This past weekend, April twenty-eighth and the thirtieth, we had zero. So you can see the enforcement is, is working, but I, I wanna assure you, just let you know that we will continue to do active enforcement, but it is upon, it's, it's a collaboration, not just upon law enforcement. We will do our part in this because we need help from the city, we need help from the community, we need help from the judicial system. So my thing is this is that once, uh, we're continuing to work with our, our, our city and our county governments to install certain things that may defeat these, uh, street takeovers from occurring. And those are maybe bot dots that the, the county and that the city are looking at. They're looking at other different types of engineering defeats to prevent a long-term solution. But we will continue to do our enforcement. So you definitely have seen in the, in the past two weeks and you will continue to see the enforcement throughout the western summer.
Alright Captain Bell, the next question. It appears the City of Paramount has an ordinance that allows them to seize cars permanently during a street takeover. Does Compton have such ordinance? If not, why not?
Yes, uh, the City of Compton does have the same California vehicle code. It is for the whole state. So just let me take a look at my, my notes real quick, and I can give you that California vehicle code. Put my glasses on again. I'm almost fifty, so. Alright, so the, the section for the California vehicle code for, as throughout the whole state, this is what every law enforcement, uh, officer throughout the whole state can cite for and tow when a street takeover is occurring. Uh, for exposition, exposition of speed or reckless driving, uh...
Why do they keep on showing infinities and low riders? Low riders and infinities gonna be over there with the low riders. Young people low riders don't allow to do stuff like that.
The authority, uh, when a street takeover is occurring and then we identify that personnel, or that person from, uh, who is participating actively, participating in a street takeover, that person is arrested for misdemeanor down their vehicle. This also gives that officer or that deputy the authority to tow that vehicle. And that, that authority could last up to thirty days.
Okay Captain Bell, next question. Uh, during a street takeover, too many people are dying. Do we have enough personnel or staffing at Compton Sheriff's Station?
Well, yes, uh, at Compton Station, there is, uh, there's, obviously, everyone knows, there's a budget that is, uh, that we contract with the city. So, the city sets forth the, the, how many deputies that they want throughout certain times throughout the day. Uh, our deputies are, is meeting that contract. Our Compton Station, we are meeting that contract at ninety-nine percent. So, based on that, on that enforcement, we are meeting our contractual needs, but however, I can just tell you that when you have six street takeovers occurring, one in one morning, one early morning hour, it is unprecedented.
Young people out there, people spend thousands of dollars in their cars. So, just because you took their cars, that's crazy.
Sheriff's Department being a larger, uh, you know, public agency, I mean, law enforcement agency, we're able to ask our partner, our sister stations to come in to assist us, and that's, you know, that's an approach that we're taking. So, Compton Station is meeting our, our contractual need, but however, when you have six street takeovers, it's unprecedented. So, the thing is, to make it such a disadvantage or make sure that these street takeovers are not occurring, that's why you see this proactive law enforcement. We're working with our, our, our city officials, our county officials, and obviously, our judicial officials to, to make sure that we're all on the same page to combat this issue.
All right, Captain Bell. Next question. Why does the, uh, Compton Municipal Code seven dash two-seven-point-three allow spectators to be arrested, but the sheriff does not use this as a tool to discourage others from coming out? If a spectator commits a crime in front of the sheriff's deputies, should they also be arrested?
Yes, so, I'm just gonna let you know that, uh, that Compton ordinance, uh, based on that, it, it can be used as a misdemeanor code, which, uh, with, when we do or make that arrest, that goes to the city attorney, and the city attorney will follow that section. What we've been doing here at Compton Station is obviously using the spectator aspect of that, where a one thousand dollars is cited to the spectator. And based on our, you know, uh, our jails and what we have going on in our jails, it's, we, we wanted to make sure that we are not overcrowding our jails. Based on that, we have a bail, a certain set of bail, and that's throughout the whole king of Los Angeles. So, there's a certain limit that when we make an arrest, that we can actually, what we call hard book. Hard book means that we make the arrest, take that person inside the jail, document, fingerprint them, and, and they stay in a jail for a couple of hours until they're cited out.
That's crazy.
Based on that right now, uh, there's a certain dilemma, or a certain threshold that our department has to meet for a hard booking, all right? So, with this right now, that, uh, that ordinance does not meet that threshold for our deputy personnel to hard book. But they are being cited out on a one thousand dollar, uh, uh.
So, they're gonna push you through the system, and you just, and you get stuck in a goddamn corner, and they just turn up and block you. This thing is a better way to go about it, you know what I mean? I think they should just, if a person something, people get caught up in the middle, and boom, there they go. You're gonna ruin their life, you're gonna throw them in the system. That's crazy.
Four or five, and we will pay four or five thousand dollars for a spectator, and the, the City of Compton is actively, uh, actively aggressively trying to recoup the, the thousand dollar fines. So, they're gonna continue to do that.
All right, Captain Bell. Last question. With the summer approaching, uh, are aircraft and or using drones are on the table to, uh, monitor street tables?
Yes, I can tell you that everything, everything is on the table. When I, when I tell you everything, everything is on the table. I can't tell you exactly all of our resources that we are using to come, combat this, these, uh, illegal street takeovers, these cruisers, Sunday night cruisers. But, uh, everything is on the table. We use helicopters, we use drones, and other investigative methods to combat this issue. So, uh, everything is on the table. Do you have any more questions?
All right, um, why does the C.H.P. use their spectator county code to arrest spectators, take their vehicles, and this has been effective? What can we done to do the same in the City of Compton?
From what I've talked to, uh, Captain Zizi over in, uh, uh, the California Highway Patrol, in the county, uh, the way it's set up, the deputy, uh, Compton Station enforces traffic for the City of Compton. The California Highway Patrol enforces traffic-related, uh, uh, violations in the unincorporated areas. There is no county code for spectators for, to be in, for an arrest. Uh, there is a California vehicle for the participants, but for the spectators, they, Highway Patrol do not arrest for spectators.
All right, Captain Bell. I'm sorry. We got additional questions here.
Sure.
Um, why does it take so long for the Sheriff's Department to respond to a street takeover? And it took over twenty-five minutes at one time to respond. Can you elaborate on that?
Well, I can only tell you that, uh, uh, sometimes we do have critical, uh, incidents in the City of Compton which are occurring. So, as I can tell you, the emergent response means that somebody's being assaulted. So, deputies sometimes are tied up on domestic violence, unfortunately, uh, gunshot victims. We do have other incidents that are occurring in Compton. So, that, a number of personnel are tied up on those type of, uh, calls for service. Now, when a street takeover does occur, it is a priority. It is a priority, but if someone is being assaulted, that takes priority. That is an emergent call, uh, takes more of a response to, you know, to handle the emergent call first. Now, we're not minimizing street takeovers. We understand that that is a priority, but if it's not being assaulted, the person who's being assaulted is gonna take precedence. So, when, in that situation, I don't know if, you know, at any point did, did that occur, but I can only conclude that if somebody's being assaulted, that would definitely take precedence.
All right, Captain Bell.
One other thing is that I just wanna assure you that there will be a response. We will either call the, the person, you know, that's making the, you know, call for service and let them know, hey, we're a little delayed, but we are gonna send someone. Someone will be there.
All right, Captain Bell. Uh, does the Compton Sheriff's Station have, uh, consider using motorcycle units, uh, to, uh, partake in the street takeovers?
Tactically, that would be unsafe for motorcycle units to be involved in that, um, based on what I've seen, and I'm sure that the men and women at Compton Station uh, have experienced, our street takeover group is very, they're violent. So, sometimes they have, you know, thrown, uh, whatever, even Molotov cocktails at our, our deputy sheriff. They've tried to set our vehicles on fire. Uh, they've been aggressive with even with, you know, coming at us with their cars, and if someone that's on a motorcycle, that would put them in harm's way. So, that wouldn't be a resource.
Captain Bell, uh, you stated that on April sixteenth, you responded to six calls for street takeovers. Could you elaborate or describe your response and what actually did the sheriff's personnel do?
Sure. On April sixteenth, our deputies responded to six calls for service for street takeover. Each incident, they were, they were able to successfully disband the group. Unfortunately, the one at, uh, let's see, Central and, Central and, Central and Alondra, there were so many numerous personnel. Obviously, our deputies could not make entry at that time. So, once they gathered a amount, a number of deputies to respond, they made entry and, uh, disbanded the group and contacted the, the business owner, the, well, the business occupant at that location to ensure that that person was not injured. So, I can only tell you that, based on, on that, it's, that was something serious that hadn't happened before in the City of Compton.
Nothing you're done about, nothing you're trying to break into people's business and shit like that. You're making them look bad. You're making them look bad for community with the low riders, you know? Cause they're trying to put us in the same category like the low riders.
Unfortunately, our youth were just, you know, acting out, and that, that felonious behavior is definitely not gonna be tolerated.
Why he's not talking about the people that they putting over the table? Where are they from? Are they from the city? Why he don't talk about that?
At the direction of my executive staff and, and, uh, Compton Station, we formed plans to make sure that we created very proactive enforcement. So, you're not gonna see the looting again in Compton. Sure, we can open up for questions?
What are you doing to take preventative measures in regards to when we do make the calls and tell you, hey, it's, uh, six P.M. and I can hear them going down the street, shoo, boom, and, and this happens right in front of my house. And February seventeenth, that night, when I called at two A.M., when they were coming, I called Century Twenty-One, and I told them, hey, they're here. I need you guys to make your presence. I need you guys to show your presence, and nobody came. He's like, okay, we'll send them out. Ten minutes later, go buy nothing. Here, they can hear more come. Six more vehicles come. I call again, again. They tell me, oh, one-twenty-fourth and Wilmington, where they were sending cruisers out there. Again, four in the morning, they're already fully packed in front of my house. And I kept calling, and the more I called, the more they hung up on me. They didn't even wanna hear me anymore. Century Twenty-One just kept making sure that my calls weren't going through. They already know me by last name. They know me by my corner of my house. How many times I've called, and they've never addressed these street takeovers. And I've asked them multiple times to take preventative measures, take preventative measures when, when I'm calling you and warning you that they're passing in front of my house. Just make your presence. That's all I ask for. Don't hang up on me. Don't, don't avoid my calls. They know who I am. They know who I am. Every time I call, they recognize my voice. Oh, one-twenty-fourth and Wilmington. Okay, we'll send cruisers out. That's how bad it is. And it's, and this isn't incorporated. I understand that, but I just wanna know, like, come on, man. Like, when we're calling and giving you guys warnings that they're coming around our houses, what are those preventative measures gonna look like? How is it gonna make these takeovers, like, really stop it, stop them from happening? Like, I just, please, like, explain to me why your deputies don't wanna give me their badge number when I ask them for it. Explain to me why they aren't giving me their first name when I ask for it.
Yep.
Okay, let me, let me respond to, um, I believe she said, uh, Century Twenty-One, I just wanna make sure that you guys know that it's not the real estate people that's, that's responding. So, it is, I, I, I believe you're referring to, uh, Century Station. And so, uh, that's our sister station, uh, Sheriff's Department, and like I stated before, um, I think you were, you're talking about the unincorporated area, and obviously, the, the Highway Patrol, uh, they handle the unincorporated area. However, that, that doesn't preclude us from assisting the Highway Patrol. We work in conjunction. So, I just wanna ensure you that, uh, you know, I have a ton of deputy personnel. We can talk to you a little bit after, get you a little bit more one-on-one attention, and talk to you about the times that you call and let you know what exactly happened, when, if the deputies did come out, or if they were delayed, they'll give you a reason for it. So, some of my deputies here, they, they will help you out. We'll talk to Century Station, get your name and number, and we'll get you a reason why they were delayed in, in coming out. And as far as, uh, anything, as far as the name and, uh, employee number for our deputies, our, our deputies, like I said, we're, we're working with you. If that did occur, we wanna make sure that doesn't happen again.
Good afternoon. My name is Cindy, and I'm her sister to Raymond Steven Olivares. And, um, Captain Bell, I remember we met on April fifteen at the town hall meeting with, um, Holly Mitchell's and C.H.P., and I remember there, it was said that we were under budget, right? We didn't have the budget or the staffing level. Um, I think you just said that we are now meeting the contractual needs. Are we now fully staffed? Do we currently have the seventy? Cause I think I checked a few days ago, and we're at thirty-four deputies at your station. So, are we now, do we now have the manpower? I know this has been an issue that we have filed now, and, uh, like you mentioned, uh, you got an attack, you got in, your car's lit on fire, you, you, you've been victims as well. Why haven't we asked for help? We do pay the, the reserves, the National Guard. If we feel that the situation is getting out of control, and these kids are running our town and vandalizing our streets as taxpayers, and, you know, being that we paid this organization, why don't we bring them in to stop? Now, the, the movement has became bigger, and they have a platform. They're monetizing on this platform. They're getting views for what they're doing, and these, these criminal acts that are on social media are leading to terrorism, vandalism, death, damage to property. Property and materialistic things are, we can recover that. You can easily call an insurance company, but I can't call an insurance company to get my brother back. So, I wanna know why is it taking, or why has it taken this long to try to solve this? It's, it's out of hand, and something needs to stop. Something needs to happen. We need to, to, if, if you can't, we need to ask for help.
Well, Ms. Olivares, you know, I extend my condolences to you, you and your family. Obviously, what you guys went through is tragic, and, uh, anyone who's experienced any loss is obviously tragic, and my heart goes out to you and your family. Um, as far as our contractual needs in, in the county, um, the county's budgeted for two cars for Compton Station. The county and the city, the city is completely different. The city has a contract with the Sheriff's Department, and the county is, uh, however, our, our, our county government, uh, sets forth those standards on how many cars are gonna be in the unincorporated area. Um, we will continue to work with our, our county government to see what, what we can do to, uh, you know, to strategize and increase, uh, more cars in your area. But as far as our deputies, our deputies are meeting the contract for the City of Compton and the county areas. Our deputies, what they do is this, is that if we are under staff, you know, throughout the United States, deputy, uh, law enforcement is under staff. That doesn't mean that your services is gonna be low, because what happens is we, we hire overtime. The deputies are working overtime. Some of our deputies are working eight spots of overtime a month. So, based on, uh, our recent, uh, negotiation with the county, and our Sheriff's Department has been giving, uh, uh, academy classes to, to start, build up our numbers, but it doesn't mean that, that your services are, are, are affected by that. Our deputies work the overtime, but we are still getting deputies, uh, to come in and successfully pass our field training program. And I, I just wanna tell you at Compton, yes, we might have some numbers that are, uh, we're probably in the teens now, as far as, I mean, as many deputies that we, that, you know, to be at, at staffing levels, but our deputies continue to work even though that, uh, we're, we're probably down about ten or fifteen deputies at the, at, at our station. So, I just wanna assure you that, uh, no services are being defaulted in the county nor in the city. So, no, no services are being defaulted. It's just that budget-wise, this is, you know, what the, the City of Compton contracts, uh, their, uh, contract specifies and what the county specifies. That's how we, we meet and put out our, our deputies out in the field. So, um, as far as the, when we talk about, uh, asking for, uh, I guess, uh, like, I think you said, uh, what was it, uh, National Guard, you know, that comes from, obviously, from the governor's office, and you, you have to be very careful when you ask for National Guard, because, you know, these are, uh, men and women who, who are not police officers, because when I tell you policing is a, is a difficult job, uh, it's not war. This is not war. We're, deputy sheriffs are in the business of saving lives. We, we, we want to help. So, when you talk about, uh, uh, you, you want the National Guard, they're in the, you know, kinda in the business of, you know, responding to armed, armed, you know, incidents, critical incidents that may involve, uh, uh, a higher risk of, you know. Let me give her, let me get, I, get rid of the mic.
Hi, my name is Tanay Mohamed Spears T. Um, first, I wanna thank you for the measure you've taken so far to respond to, um, the street takeover, the street takeovers, um, since the looting happened. Um, my whole purpose of mentioning what I'm about to mention is, um, with the ideal of trying to help. What you've done in getting the other, um, sheriff departments to assist you in responding is great, but how can you keep that up? Being realistic. And so, looking at the C.M.C., the Compton Municipal Code, it clearly states that it's a misdemeanor for spectators to be there. Um, looking at the L.A. County, um, Code, there is actual spectator code, and it, it states the same thing, and it's, um, there's more language to it that clearly allows C.H.P. to make arrests, and they have actually made arrests of spectators, and they have taken, um, vehicles of spectators. Doing something like that to spectators kinda puts the word out, like, you don't wanna come back, you know? You've arrested me, you've taken my car. In mind, when it goes to court, it may be thrown out, but the fact that they had to go through that process is a big deal. Something like that could deter them from coming back to the city. I heard part, I understood part of what you said, but I wasn't clear on why the Sheriff Department cannot make an arrest, being that if you look at the language, and I have copies if anybody wants, wants any of it, if you look at the language, it clearly. cannot make an arrest, being that, if you look at the language, and I have copies if anybody wants, wants any of it, if you look at the language, it clearly says, they just have to be standing there. They don't have to participate in the actual takeover for it to be defined as breaking the law. So if they're breaking the law in front of a sheriff deputy, you see them breaking the law, it states that it's breaking the law, why can't there a, a rest be made, because once you arrest them, their car is still left there. And it clearly states that you can take their car, you can impound their car, that's a whole lot of something for somebody to have to do to keep coming back to a street takeover.
Well, let me tell you today, I, I, I want you to come out on a ride along, because you, you put a lot in there, and like I stated, as I talked to the C H P officer, as far as spectators, they have not, that's, that's per Joe Zeezy. I have not, he says that we have not arrested anybody for spectators. But however, let me go back to what, and explain a little bit about what you're, you're saying. For an arrest, when somebody is cited out, when somebody is cited, that is, that is arrest when you're cited out. However, what we're talking about is hard booking, hard booking, or, or is that what you're talking about, when we physically take someone to, to, to jail? Okay, okay, so hard booking, as I explained a little bit earlier, and I know you probably did miss that, there is a, uh, based on a directive by the Sheriff's Department, since the Sheriff's Department is the county, we, we accept everyone's, uh, I guess, arrest, felonious arrest, because after a certain amount of days, that, if it is a felony, they have to bring that person to, to be housed at a county facility, all right, because there's, there's, uh, legal law that people, certain people can't stay in a small jail for, uh, past a certain amount of time. So when you, when you bring people to, to, to the county facility or to our county jails, right, it increases our numbers, it increases our population, inmate population, so based on that right now, um, there's a certain dollar, dollar threshold that if someone brings someone to the county jail, our county jails, they have to meet that threshold. The one thousand dollar, uh, threshold is, is too low for a hard booking, all right, for a hard booking. If we did that, um, we would be past our limit of, you know, thirty thousand people or something like that in our jails at, in, in any given time. So as you know, before COVID started, we had, there was a thing called Zero Bell. So if you guys know about Zero Bell, that started when COVID, and so, we couldn't even arrest anyone for, for, uh, a low-grade misdemeanor and some low-grade felonies. So since now Zero Bell has ended, we can arrest people for certain misdemeanors again and keep them in jail. But those misdemeanors are, generally speaking, are for spousal, spousal assault, domestic violence, sexual crimes, or if somebody is drunk in public, then they, we can bring those people in for, for that time. So, based on that, it has to be a, a, a monetary threshold for us to hard book. So when people are arrested for spectating or for, for exposition of speed, reckless driving, yes, they are arrested, but they are given a court date, and they go to court at a later time.
Hey, how's it going, Captain?
I know.
You mentioned as far as, um, wanting the community support, how does that look like, and also from the city? What exactly would you like us as community or resident members to do to support, um, you guys and your efforts to prevent this? Or, um, hold the city accountable, how does that look like?
Well, I can tell you, as this lady, this young lady's behind, Mr., uh, Tanei Mohammed, uh, just stated, continuously call us, call the Compton Sheriff's Station, advise us, because usually if the street takeover is already set up, it is very difficult for our deputies to, to come in and to, uh, to, you know, tactically, you know, arrest people, cite people, and, and do it, and we can get it on the inception, the, the, the preparation, when you start to see these vehicles starting to line up, if she, like she stated, if, if you hear cars going up and down the street, give us, give us a call, give us a call, it is, it's game to national action. My, my executives right here, they wouldn't be sitting here, they wouldn't be, you know, this wouldn't be serious if we, uh, we wouldn't be having this town hall. So my whole thing is this, is that, you know, I can only tell you that I know what's been going on for a couple of years, but we are committed to making sure that we are, you know, committed to eradicating this problem. All right, so we want to make sure that, we know that no one likes street takeovers or the Sunday cruise. So we're, we're committed to doing it, so if you could help us out, continue to call us, provide us with information, even if you want to provide us with, uh, anonymously, with people that you know who's been involved in a street takeover, you could call us and give your name and address.
Good evening, so you mentioned some of the proactive things you're doing, but I didn't hear anything on the social media aspect, because we know all these kids are sending everything through social media, so what is your department doing from a technological standpoint, so you know in advance where these events are taking place? So you can be in the area and you can be seen and prevent these kids from gathering in these areas?
That's a good question, ma'am, I just want to tell you that, uh, our department uses social media, we're Facebook streaming this live right now. Uh, we do have, uh, active investigators who monitor social media, uh, websites, that's one of our tools that we, we use, but like, like I stated before, I, there's certain things that I definitely won't be able to talk about everything, what we're using, all the tools that we're using to come combat this issue, but obviously, like, as you stated, social media is a platform, or these, this use, or these legal straight takeovers are using that platform, and we're going to use that platform to monitor, so we're coming out.
My name is Lambo. First of all, I want to say, um, to the community, as far as like helping out the sheriff, our policymakers, which are elected officials, are, should increase or change the policies, something that they're not doing, because just like he said, a thousand dollars is nothing nowadays. And a day in jail or possibly a day in jail. But what other cities have done, they have increased, uh, their policies, and so that's why these people don't go to their cities anymore. But what I want to ask the, uh, captain right now, it's about two months ago, you made a PowerPoint presentation at City Council meeting, and you said you had applied for a grant, and you had the federal government in here, uh, to assist you. I never heard anything else from that, I never, the, the street takeovers were happening at that time plus other issues, but I never heard of any incident where the grant that you had applied for, where the federal government actually came in and actively helped the city, thank you.
Well, Ms. Ruth, uh, I just want to let you know that the federal government is assisting us with, uh, uh, gang investigations. So that's where that money is going towards, it is assisting us with gang shootings, gang murders and stuff like that, so that is working with, uh, on a different end from our street takeovers. Um, our street takeovers, like I stated before, we're going to continue to apply for any, and work with the city and the county, uh, to, to get any type of funding, whatever funding that may come from the state, whatever legislative law litigation that may change from this, we're gonna, we're the Sheriff's Department, we, all we do is, we service you, we service you, so my whole thing is, we're going to work with the city governments, we're going to work with the county governments, and if there's funding that is out there, we're going to work with them to obtain this money. My thing is, like I said, for the long-term solution, hopefully, my thing is this, is that if we can find some type of street defeats to prevent these, uh, these, uh, street takeovers from occurring, that'd be one in, uh, one thing, but also in conjunction with law enforcement, and also with your help, and also the judicial help, and making sure that, uh, these things stick. We don't, they're not getting released when we send these type of cases over to the judicial system. Let me, give me one minute, I wanted to see if my chief wanted to interject.
Yes, I did. Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Bob Watch, as the captain said, I'm the chief over, uh, Central Patrol Division. That's the division under which, uh, Compton is, um, um, operating under. A, a couple of times I've heard, um, folks think that what has changed now, um, compared to the past? Why now are the resources just now coming in, so I kind of want to explain that and assure you as to what's going to happen in the future. Well, we do have a limited amount of resources in terms of what we're doing across the county. As you all know, this is the very, very large county, one of the most populous counties in the country. The Sheriff's Department is the largest sheriff's department in the country, but when you compare that to the number of people that we have, and type of crime that we have, we have to decide and prioritize what we're going to attack and how important it is. We have a lot of things going on, um, in the county, a lot of things going on in each station. As you all know, the street takeovers is just not happening in Compton. It's happening all across the county, it has grown in the past five to ten years, it has grown to something that is equivalent to what you would see, um, in regards to social media, in regards to what the, our young people are doing, to an event that they kind of aspire to do, you hear kids talking about it in high school, going to a Friday or a Saturday night event as though it's a social event or a sports game or a concert. So that's where it is, it's kind of a phenomenon. Yeah, so, we have to decide how we're going to address that, each captain has a finite amount of resources that they're given to deal with the problems in their areas. If that goes beyond their capabilities, we come in sometimes as a division or as a department and say, you know what, that captain is doing as much as he can with the resources that they have, we are now going to supplement that captain with our resources. Now, I would tell you, us, us being the largest sheriff's department in the world, we have the most resources for law enforcement in terms of specialized operations, specialized bureaus, and specialized teams and task force. Once we decide to focus on something that's a problem within our county, you almost always see that issue go away. I can guarantee you, from the perspective of the division and the department, we are going to give Captain Bill everything he needs to make this problem go away. That does not mean this is going to go away in one week or two weeks, two weeks or three weeks. This has been building for the past five to ten years, it's going to take a complicated and a resourceful type of approach to do that. We have all type of tactics, all type of things that we know we are going, we are employing, that's going to address this. We are not going to talk about everything that we're doing or everything that we're starting to do because we can't. We can't tell you anything that we're doing on the, um, backing in terms of social media, but I assure you, we are doing a lot and we are just getting started, this is not, what you saw happen in the last week is just the beginning of this in terms of our resources. Um, and you're going to see a whole lot more, but I can guarantee this, there's going to be a change. And then we're going to be talking to you guys again in a couple of months, we're going to have another town hall, we're going to have more results. So what you saw happen last week with a few of our resources is just the beginning, and they're going to come back, because they're watching this right now, I guarantee that. Uh, the folks who are involved in this are, are, are very sly in how and what they do. Most of you know they have tactics that are very advanced, the things that they use, the social media that they use, how they use scouts, how they did with Captain Bill, said how they, um, pushing a bunch of calls to us. What they don't have is the unity of resources that we can bring to bear if we decide to do so. We have decided to do so in the city of Compton. We will be here for the long haul with our special resources, and again, you will see a slow change, but we are not trying to change this just, uh, for the next couple of months. We're trying to change this for the foreseeable future so that they understand the city of Compton is not the place you want to come anymore to do your street takeovers, it is not the place you want to come to hang out and cruise. That's unfortunate, because a lot of these kids, most of these kids and these folks and these young adults are good people. They just want an outlet, but it's gotten to a point now where we have to address it, so I say again, we are just getting started. Does it mean you won't see them come back, does it seem, when, does it mean we're not going to have to change our tactics and how we do it? And again, I'm not going to discuss all those things that are coming, but it does mean we have decided to eradicate this problem once and for all. Um, and you're going to see this happening in other areas, right? Do you know what happens, we, we stamp it out in one area, they go to other areas. Um, that's something that we'll have to deal with, with our partners in C H P and L A P D, and our, our, our brothers and sisters in the other departments that kind of surround us, we're working on that. But, um, I'm not going to sit here and lie to you and make it seem like we can make this thing go away in great effort in terms of the totality of the county, we cannot. But we can certainly focus our efforts on one city and have some results applied here.
I believe we have some questions, some ads over here.
Good evening, I'm Marjorie Schiff, and I am very happy to hear that you're going to make it so as if they're not going to want to come to Compton. Because in the past, I've been here, this is Compton, so that's why they come here from San Diego's and for San Francisco and all over, and my question was, why Compton? Why do we have to be the, the, where, where they want to come and do their dirty work? If they don't live here, they shouldn't be here. So I'm related to hear that you says you're going to really put your foot down and do something about it, because I live near Wilmington and Cardwell, that's another hotspot. And I could hear them in the middle of the night, in the weary hours of the morning, so thank you for your efforts. I'm really happy to hear what you're saying.
I can tell you this, uh, when they ask why Compton, uh, well, Compton has labeled getting the, I guess, for the street takeovers, they want some street credit. They want some street credit, so anyone that's coming out from a, a different county or a different city, they, they feel that it's, it's, it's a good thing to come out here to Compton to get that street cred and then post it on a social media site. So unfortunately, the social media has, you know, increased their, their awareness and what they, what they do, and, you know, for some reason, they think that is, it is, they're getting some type of, you know, acknowledgement on, I can only guess that based on social media, I'm not a social media, I don't, you know, I don't have any social media. So, whatever these kids, whatever, how many likes they get for them to come to Compton, that's, that's what they're doing. But as the chief said, and I, as I stated to, in, in the city of Compton and unincorporated area, wherever Compton Station, you know, wherever we patrol, we're gonna, we're gonna eradicate the problem.
Thank you for your response, um, and thank you for now taking action, but for some of us, like me and the other, I think it's twenty-one other victims, it's a little too late for their response. And I, to answer the gentleman's question here, I have pledged to reach out to leaders myself, and I also ask you guys to write letters, reach out, and try to get these laws to change so that they can enforce them properly, and that these perpetrators can get charged properly, instead of going out and um, getting their car out with a thousand dollars from the impound, they just don't have a car to go back to, it's being auctioned out. They no longer have the ability to forget, gain that car, because these people are organizers, I, I've been doing research on them, there's YouTube, there's a YouTube channel dedicated to a specific crew, and they have amendments, and they back each other up, they pitch in to get the thousand dollars to get their cars back, and they're back out here, and it's like a grand prize, like, hey, I got my car back. So what we need to do is get together and, and try to create a system to where we don't have these people doing this again. I want to thank, um, the mayor and other council people who have heard me out, they've listened to my action plan, I told them we need a three-strike thing in place for them, and I, I, I told them that we told them how it can work, and eventually on that third strike, they lose their license, because they're not responsible enough to be out there, they're going to have Uber use for public transportation to go around, because they are a danger to society ultimately.
I appreciate that, we're going to work with, uh, like I said, we will work with our city officials, county governments, and, and our state legislator, you know, because if, if you do, I mean, we're willing to do enforce, we willing to enforce. I don't like street takeovers, I definitely don't, so, I, I, I feel.
Hi, my name is Sinetta Floridi, I live in East Rancho Dominguez. Um, you made a statement that, um, your chief made a statement that, um, you all have other resources, and you focused a lot on Compton. Well, East Rancho Dominguez is next door, and I can't tell you, I live about a block from Atlantic and Compton Boulevard. I hear them at five o'clock, three o'clock, two o'clock, um, sometimes ten o'clock. So my question to you, are those resources is going to be also used in East Rancho Dominguez? And I don't know if West Rancho Dominguez is here, but they have the same problem, so it's not just Compton. Your, your resources needs to, to expand across the border. Across, across, because i- i- if they go from one place, when they leave one place, they go to the next place. And so, I hope that you all will expand your resources, that they will expand, increase and include our communities too.
Thank you, ma'am, so let, let me clarify what I meant when I said, um, uh, when I say city of Compton and resources, so on the, April sixteenth, when we had the incident, the A M P, and when they went inside the store and, and took over the store, that same night, they went inside Paramount too, it was that same thing, it didn't even see it on the news, but the same thing happened. So when I say resources in Compton, I'm identifying Compton as kind of the heart of our operations, but we have cities to the south, Carson that we patrol, to the, uh, east, uh, Paramount, and to the north with the Central Patrol. I'm talking about the entire area. I'm using Compton as the focal point, but the resources that I'm talking about are hitting kind of all over, because we don't want to push the problem into another city as well, so, um, some of the resources that I'm talking about are coming from those stations, because they're talking to their stations as they apply. It's not our intent, again, to push this to any other area or any other city, but once I, we identify that city of Compton is our focal point, that's where we're going to, we're going but once I, we identify that city of Compton is our focal point, that's where we're going to start. We're certainly trying, and again, we cannot get into all the resources and things that we're doing, but they're very complex, and they're very long in nature in terms of investigations. We have teams that look at things that you brought up now. We have resources that can look at social media. We have resources that can look at certain persons who are, you know, seeing doing these things time and time and time again. Now, it is a collective effort. All, everything you talked about is everything that we need together. We can only do so much on the law enforcement side that's going to help, but there are many things that citizens can do to bring the bear, their thoughts and voices, to our folks who are making the laws to help us out. Our hands are tied sometimes by the law, we can only go after offenders who are doing serious things. But if we don't do this, and if we don't do this now, there are going to be more and more folks who are employed. And don't forget, folks, you have young people who have been hurt, killed at these events, and they still go to them. And their friends are being hurt. But we were all young, young folks here who are there now, we're all young and heart in spirit, and we know that when you're young, it's very hard to get them to understand that what they're doing is dangerous, and it can affect people's lives. So again, it's incumbent upon all of us to work together, but I can assure you, I just didn't mean Compton. I meant everything in this area and within a region of us. If something happens here, if we identify a person, we will go after them to the boundaries of the county and beyond. Doesn't mean anything to us that they just started here. But for right now, we have to send a message to the folks who are coming here from all over, not just San Diego, from up north. And once you identify something on social media as a young person, it's a focal point, right? They all come, they make it their own. But we have to tell them, and we are telling them, and if you're listening to me right now, understand, this is not the place you want to come anymore. You come at your own peril, you come at the chance of your car being taken away, at you being arrested. All right? So you don't want to come to the city of Compton. And that's going to be our message from this point on out. But ma'am, this doesn't mean just the city of Compton. Anything where the sheriff's department has reached, and with our sister agencies, and who we are talking to, all right? Thank you ma'am.
I live, I live in the same area where the lady lives at, and I be hearing the same thing at 2, 3, 4 o'clock in the morning. Now, this is my question. Right down Rancho Dominguez, there's a parking lot, why don't you guys have a unit officer there until 4 o'clock to text the people, and confiscate their car, not give it back to them?
Well, I can tell you this, sir, that every possible consideration is being looked at. There's a lot of times that people will say, hey, just put a unit there, and a unit there. That takes away from a lot of different other services that people may need. As I explained a little bit earlier, there, there's critical incidents that go on in the service areas that we patrol. So for us just to put a fixed patrol spot and just have that deputy sit there and be paid, and you will never know if a street takeover occurred, that would be misutilizing the services.
They do this all night, every day, all night, Compton.
I understand, like I said, I understand what you're saying. However, I understand, and I'm not just, you know, minimizing your concern, but I could do that for everyone, just like the lady right here that lives in the unincorporated area. I could put a car right there, we had enough cars that we could put it on every block, in different areas, we would. But however, we have limited resources, and those resources have to be strategically, you know, assigned to handle the issue. So we are handling that issue, as I stated before, I just want to let you guys know. One more time, I'm going to stress that, you know, in the past two weeks, our resources have, we've had one call, one call for service, I mean, one street takeover, excuse me, one street takeover in the past two weeks. This is something that is, you know, our deputy sheriffs were out there enforcing. So I commend those men and women that were out there, you know, doing the Lord's work, out there doing patrolling. So they made sure that, who's ever watching social media right now, they knew not to come out, because their friends text them and told them, don't go to Compton. I guarantee you, don't go to Compton. They're citing, you know, those are some of the social media, whatever it means that we see. Don't go to Compton, they're citing people, they're taking cars. So we're going to continue that enforcement, but we want to make sure we eradicate it. Let me get her a mic down there, so I can hear her properly.
What about the traffic unit, they deal with all the details and things with all of the stuff? Can you utilize the traffic unit for certain things, like the street takeover, if they don't have enough vehicles?
Did you say traffic unit?
Yeah.
To utilize, like I stated before, even the chief knows. All of our investigative bureaus, but what we can utilize is being utilized.
My name is Edward Wheeler, I live on the border of Carson and Compton. Now, the street takeover is in Carson, in the industrial area. What these guys have done is, they went to a cul-de-sac, they're not bothering traffic or anything like that, but they're just going four, five hours a night straight. Do you coordinate with Carson? Because when I call, nothing happens. So do you coordinate, you can have them send a patrol car over there, or what?
Well, this is the first time I've heard of that. I will coordinate with Carson Station, I know the captain very well. You know, that's definitely something that we'll look into. Like I said, that's the first time I've ever heard about them doing the street takeover in the industrial area. So we'll definitely, we'll work with Captain Jones.
I must live near him. My name's Tia Walker, I live on the border of Carson and Compton. And as for as long as I've grown up, I've gone to bed listening to street racing in the Carson industrial area. That's nothing new. I recently posted a video on social media where you could hear the audio of what a street takeover sounds like. It sounded like I was literally standing on the corner as a spectator, but it was going on in Carson. My husband called the Carson Sheriff's Station, and within about two, three minutes, we heard sirens, and then it went quiet. We got curious, so we got our car and went over there, and there was a squad car and a tow truck sitting where the takeover had been taking place. But on the way to there, we saw the cars leaving, and you can identify which cars were the likely culprits. So they did come out and respond, but that's nothing new, and that's an ongoing thing. They will go back there, because they know nobody checks there. And they'll tear it up, if you go there in the daylight hours, you'll see all the skid marks. Go down Walnut, go down there in Artesia, Walnut, all up and down between Artesia and Avalon. You'll just see it, it's all tore back there. But I wanted to say, I live near Alondra and Central, and I will say that it's gotten so much quieter. The noise was insane, because Alondra and Central is a really bad hotspot, and I've been talking to the city council about that specific intersection when the street takeovers first started, because I literally have nightmares about one of those two gas stations blowing up. Because some idiot doesn't know how to complete a stunt that he shouldn't be doing in the first place. I've talked to the employees at the CBS station, pharmacy, and I asked them, what do you guys do when they start doing street takeover? And they told me that they will lock the doors, and they only allow customers out, but they won't let any new people in, and they'll shut down for a complete hour. And that is for safety reasons, because I don't know if you know this, but in other areas, they run up in pharmacies and hop the pharmacy counter and start taking pharmaceuticals from the back counter. We're lucky that all they took was some chips and some condoms from the ARCO. But you have pharmacy on the corner, and there's a church, and you know, there's some other things going on. But it looks like whatever you guys started doing is working, so I do want to commend you for that, and thank you for that, because it, living near that intersection is horrible. It's, you can hear it, you can smell it, it's just so bad. I wanted to ask you a question, have you made any arrests from the incident that happened at the ARCO station? Have you identified any of the people there? I can tell you, just having a nonprofit, I've had people send me social media accounts, videos with clear faces, license plate numbers, and I'm not in law enforcement, I can't do anything about that. The second question I wanted to ask you is, what is your plan for the other parties that are complicit in the street takeover culture, and by that I mean the parents? Who we know that a lot of them know that their youth are engaging in these activities, and they don't do anything. I know that, because once they are killed, we see them on the news crying about how they know he or she was participating in that, but they were hoping nothing would happen. Maybe they need help, maybe they tried telling them, can you stop doing that, and they don't listen. Maybe a little more outreach would be helpful. The other party would be social media, they're never going to be helpful. They have community guidelines that they don't enforce. One of those is publishing dangerous activities. If you try to report those posts, they don't take them down. They'll take mine down, because I used a wrong song on a completely innocent video of a community event. But the social media companies are all making money off of the activity. And as she said, that's how they get their money. You wonder, how are y'all buying tires? How are you replacing the bumpers you leave in the street? How are you fixing your rims? How are you fixing those actions that you bust? They are literally making hundreds and thousands of dollars a day, just posting. I know you're not a social media person, but as a constituent of yours, I want to encourage you to please sit down for just 30 minutes and have somebody go over for you how social media monetization works. Because I can get paid on social media to just post what I'm cooking for dinner. Nobody literally cares, but when it comes to something like that, that spreads like wildfire, and you have people in St. Louis who love Compton because it's featured on GTA, they're going to look for those lives. You got people in other countries who love the city of Compton culture, and they look for those lives. Even though they're on a different time zone. Social media companies are not going to help you shut the post down, but you have the governor's ear. I know some of your reps have the governor's ear, and there's something we can do legislative wise to hold the social media companies accountable for being complicit in this culture.
Let me try to answer your question. Listening to your statements, so I'm going to ask you the first one, as far as the social media. Just because I don't have social media, doesn't mean that the sheriff's department doesn't have investigators or, you know, deputy personnel that monitor the social media. So we do, I mean, social media is being monitored, all right? Just want to let you know, I am a deputy here who looks like he's 16 in the audience right here. Where's my deputy McIntosh? Oh, he took off, but he's one of our younger guys that knows about social media. So I just wanted, let me go back to what you said about, I think, the AMPM. I think you wanted to know if there's been an arrest. I just want to let you know that our major crimes is investigated, so I don't have that information, all right? I can't give you that information out right now. Our major crimes is investigating that incident. So when I just tell you that major crimes, they are good at what they do. They have a great success rate, they solve crimes. So when, like I stated before, this is the largest, as the chief stated, this is the largest sheriff's department in the world. Our investigators, well, a lot of people come from around the world, I mean, from the United States to learn from our investigators. So our investigators are great at what they do. It might take some time, but it's not just going to happen overnight. I believe the second one was, you asked a question, I'm sorry, it was a little bit long, but if...
I'm sorry, I know I'm long. As far as the social media, is there any plan to legislative wise, hold them accountable, also the parents?
Let me explain to you about the parents. So when you have a juvenile who commits a crime, if we identify a juvenile, there is a system in place by the judicial services that the parent is also citing. So the parent has to, obviously, you know, answer for their juvenile. The juvenile is definitely going to answer for whatever crime he or she committed, but the parent is also citing, they have to attend court. So it'll be up to the judicial system, however, they're going to enforce whatever punishment on that juvenile. So that will be on the judicial side. So parents, I mean, if there is a juvenile there, and they're being held to answer for whatever crime they're participating in, and being involved of, once we take them back to their parent, their parent is getting cited too.
Is that what happens when you arrest a juvenile, or you come across a juvenile at a takeover? Whether they're a driver or a spectator, are they handled differently from somebody over 18, or is that the same process?
Yes, that is, for a juvenile, you have to handle things a little bit differently based on the laws. So every parent is cited, so a juvenile can't really answer for themselves. So the parent is obviously the governing person for that juvenile. So any type of crime, the parent has to be also cited. Any other questions out there?
Hi, my name is Royce Esters, President of National Association for Legal Justice America. We were the crime committee for the city for seven years. Didn't have any crime party, but the politics got rid of us. Right now, we're going to be working with LAPD, ATF, CHP, school police, and the sheriff's department. I ask the consequences. Paramount, you throw some paper out there, $3,000. They're not fooling around. Donuts, did they say, the donuts and all this, the stuff they do with the donuts? $10,000, two years in prison, not the county. Take their car, take their driver's license, don't let them drive no more. Then you have to come down armed. We got confetti all over the city, that starts the gang wars. What I'm saying is this, is that they come to Compton, it's a little trash. If you have a beautiful city, people wouldn't do that. So what I'm saying is this, we got unsolved homicides the last eight years. Where's the homicide division? We got confetti all over the city, unsolved crimes. That's not, we need a homicide division. I'm saying, wake up, because I know that we can work together. I'm just telling it like it is. So I'm just saying, we have a meeting Saturday, May 20th, at Holy Chap, 3 to 5. We're not going to be playing around with these people. $10,000, two years in prison, take the car, and keep driving anymore, period.
Appreciate your comments, and like I said, if we're able to get that litigation passed, we support it.
Hello, my name is Alonso Williams, I'm the president of the County Entertainment Chamber of Commerce. And where I live, which is right near the county of LA, the same type of takeover that was, that took place on Central and Alondra, happened by my house. It was 711, that was, I'm sorry, street takeover, 711 got raided, home nine yards. What the owners of that lot did is, they contacted a company called LTV, and they put the cameras, the tall mast, four cameras, 360 degree view of everything, and that situation stopped completely. I don't know if that's something you may be considering here in Compton, but the cameras are solar powered, they are heat sensitive, they are activated by heat sensors. So when something takes place, whoever's monitoring the camera gets an instant view of what's going on, and they're able to respond a lot faster. Maybe it's something that may be available here in the city of Compton, just an idea, thank you very much.
Appreciate you, Mr. Williams. Well, I'm sure we'll talk after, and you know, discuss that a little bit further, and maybe we can sit down and talk to our officials, and see if we can institute something like that.
Can you hear me? My name is Mark Smith, and I live on Alondra. Well, I appreciate you, Chief, Captain Bell, your public outreach and things that you guys have done. Quite frankly, I'm pissed. I'm pissed, what comes to mind, and I have to get this out, because we've been talking about resources, and what you're contractually liable to, and I'm saying, your contracts versus lives that are at risk here in the city, that part I don't understand. First thing that comes to mind is what is a comprehensive approach? Because this is happening in Compton. I know the community shares with me that we feel like we're being targeted. We're marginalized, undervalued, we're underestimated here in this city. That's what pisses me off, first thing, this wouldn't happen, if this happened in Palos Verdes, resources would be there. And y'all all know I'm telling the truth. This happened in Lamita, resources would be there. That's the problem I have. I appreciate you, you chief, saying that you're not just serving this community lip service, or what's happening, those scouts you're talking about, those are the mini bikes. When I was young, they could take our mini bikes from us, put them in their trunk, those are your scouts. There's one traffic signal, West Mile 1, says 40 miles an hour, I have it on tape. Excuse me, video. We have no identification, no warning, because when you come west or east on Alondra, especially coming down that hill, it's like an open roadway, they open it up. I have not seen high visibility, even when there's not street takeovers. Speed is atrocious, up and down, that thoroughfare. Your motorcycle units, how come we don't have? Uh, your motorcycle units, how come we don't have any to deploy here? Not just for the street takeovers, but for regular, everyday traffic violations, high speed. We don't have that, Captain Bell, and, and I have not seen a high visibility in prison. Uh, uh, your presence or high visibility? If we can, this gentleman talked about those, uh, cameras, I think we have one on Wilmington and Alondra. There's one situated here, but we need more of those type of things to help facilitate and augment the resources that you say you're lacking. And we want the same services that the sheriff provides, other cities we want it right here in our community. Why not, why are we left on the back burner here? And I, I, I just know in my heart, I know it's contractual to me, but you can't legislate like, you can't contractual, contractualize that, and make me understand you, okay, when, uh, lives are at risk here. So, there's no question in that, other than I appreciate you all and what you're trying to do, but we've gotta pick this thing up, because they're coming back, the smell of rubber, the citizens, taxpayers have just paid for that. Our, our street thoroughfare to be paid, it's poor. You know, we have high taxes, and the money's being just thrown away, and it just seems like a ci- a city of lawlessness regarding the street takeovers. And I, I'm with the person who said, I worry about those gas stations. I, I really do, I live right down the street. I've spoke before, or you can set your watch to when you come down Alondra. And they do send out scouts. They're on mini bikes, that's out of control, no helmets. Just probably unregulated. So, uh, please, work with us, get some motorcycle units out there. For them to do it right, makes doing where your airship is at. In the airport is an insult to you, to you guys. You guys have an airship right there, just bow, embolting. Don't beat twice, thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to, I wanted to, sir, I wanted to, uh, answer a couple things that you stated in, uh, uh, some of the things you said in regards to the resources and how if it happened in other cities, it would be resolved very quickly. Uh, we, we hear, we hear that a lot, and we, that's the perception a lot. And I'm not gonna go into details for a lot of other cities, but think about some other cities right now that are getting hit hard, that, um, have a whole lot of money, and they keep getting hit for certain crimes. Um, I'm not gonna name the city that, that it is, but it's not our city. What I wanna tell you is this, when, when I describe how many people we have in the county, how many officers we have in resources, you can do the math yourself and figure out, how many folks do we have in the city of Compton? How many cars are contracted? It'll show you what the, what the ratio of deputy to citizen is. And I will tell you this, if you look at the end of our program, which is gonna be, um, when it stops, I can tell you then, the amount of resources we dedicate to this, and the amount of teams, to the number in terms of personnel, in terms of, in terms of teams that came through here. And I guarantee you, it'll be a whole lot more than most folks probably think. It's just that, a lot of times, we have to decide where to deploy the resources. If we have a high spike in gang activity, we're gonna redeploy it to that area, because our pri- our first priority is always preservation of life. And even though this causes death, and it causes a lot of ill, and it causes this noise pollution, and it hurts us a lot, because our quality of life goes down, if it comes to somebody dying immediately, and we know it's a particular gang, then we have to address that first. But we're not doing that with this, because we have other resources, don't typically work on homicides. They just work to stay on a lot of cases that don't really involve homicides, so we can redirect. But I don't want any of you folks to ever think or believe that the sheriff's department is not giving you as many resources as we can. The division that we work in are all cities that are aligned with Wisconsin, um, Centuries area, the, um, South LA area, Marina Del Rey, those are all of our resources that are coming to bear right now. I don't have any stations that are outside of that. And we have some of the most resources in the entire sheriff's department, because we're some of the largest. So I can bring to bear a whole lot of resources. I don't want you to think or believe, and I will prove what I'm saying, because I'm gonna give you a number at the end of this, I'll be at the end of this operation, and the operation will go until it stops, and I will show you how many units we have come through. And it's gonna be a whole lot more than what Captain Bell was given originally to, to contend with the normal calls. Also, folks, when you say things like, I park a car at a particular spot, and park a, a resource at a particular area, we don't dictate what happens in the city in terms of crime. The folks who are committing the crimes do. We have to respond to that. So if we take a car and put it in one place, and three homicides happen over here, we have to move that car quickly, because people are in need, um, right now. Unfortunately, we live in LA County, LA County has a lot of crime in it. Every crime that is committed in the world happens in LA County, because we have people from all over the world that live here. We contend with a whole lot, we are not miracle workers, and it's not gonna happen. Those of you who have lived through your whole lives, like I have, you know, in the eighties, in the nineties, there was a lot of stuff going on. And we've had to combat that and go through that, and things are changing. Sometimes it takes us a little while to catch up, but what can we do? We keep talking about social media here, folks, but when it comes to organizing stuff and planning things, there's nothing like dark web. There are things being planned there that you wouldn't believe, and things that are happening there. The organizational piece on the criminal side, they're not hammered by laws, they're not hammered by morals. We are, we have to abide by the law, and we have to be careful. There are really, there are a whole lot of First Amendment rights that people have on social media. It's your right to be able to say what you wanna say and how you wanna say it. We can only monitor people on social media who are committing crimes. If you're committing, if you're not committing a crime, we cannot look at you, and we should not be able to look at you. There are huge loopholes that people use. That's why it's incumbent to do what these young ladies said here, and to combine everybody, from the citizens to us, to kinda control this thing. But I don't want you to ever believe or think that we're not giving you the resources, and again, I'm not just gonna tell you this. I can prove this to you and show you with the numbers that we deploy, the city of Compton, when this is done. And it's gonna be a whole lot more than you think. One other thing is this, is that if you, you think that you wanna come out on a ride along, I want you to come out on a ride along. Experience what our deputies and winners are out there doing. I guarantee you, they're actively engaging in criminal conduct, you know, uh, the, the criminal conduct, preventing the criminal conduct. So they're engaging these, these, these suspects, engaging the people who are involved in these type of situations. They're engaging day in and day out, making arrests. So my whole thing is this, is that if you have any doubt, come out and do a ride along. It, it's, it's open to, our sheriff's department's open twenty-four seven. I'm gonna get three more questions, what I wanna do is this, we're gonna answer three more questions, and then we'll go ahead and, and be able to, uh, end this, and then speak to you one more.
Hi.
Take a second, please. Uh, first of all, thank you all for being here, taking time out of your busy days, but let me expand a little bit on what the chief said. Uh, prior, my prior assignment was the unit commander at East LA Station, and we had the exact same situation occur there in the Cities of Commerce, Maywood, Carrahag, and East LA. And, uh, we deployed the exact same personnel that we're currently deploying here to those three jurisdictions. Now, we take all of our jurisdictions, uh, uh, in the exact same fashion. There just doesn't work, whether you're in, whether you're in Lamita, whether you're in Compton, or whether you're in East LA. It's all just as important to us. But, uh, the deployment is not what was successful for us. What was successful for us was the accountability, like this young lady mentioned. Um, so what I did one day is, uh, we took video of, of all the, uh, street takeovers, and we brought in one of the captain advisory committee groups in, into my office, and I, and we watched that video. And in that video, we saw that there was relatives, there were kids there of our constituents that were there, uh, participating, watching, uh, the, uh, the street takeovers. Uh, so we said, let's hold you guys accountable, uh, because believe it or not, our kids, your kids, your relatives, our relatives are the ones who are out there watching the street takeovers taking place. And I don't mean that directly by you individually, okay? I'm just saying that our community is, is that community that are, that's out there, uh, uh, participating in this. So, we started holding the parents accountable, uh, the things started to, to get a little bit better for us. So it wasn't necessarily the deployment, it was, it was a combination of our deployment and our, and our, and our constituents holding each other accountable. Uh, and the minute that we do that as a community, uh, it helps us increase, uh, our percentages of being successful. So, please help us out, because without your support, without you calling in to letting us know that this incident happened at four o'clock in the morning, and five o'clock in the morning, we are absolutely worthless. So please, keep that in mind. You are what makes every operation successful. Whether it's street takeovers, whether it's combating crime, you are the reason why we are successful.
Yeah, my name is Senator Taga, so, we go in the house here in Compton for five years. Um, experienced a lot, and I kinda know why Compton is the to-go spot. I feel like a lot of times, they enable the behavior of crime. For instance, they sell dope in front of my house, that place continues to stay open. The takeovers come, they kick them out, nobody gets out the car to cite them, to stop them, and I understand, you're dealing with like a hundred cars, but if you just pull over one, if you just come close down the dope house, that's starting, that's making a point. Um, it shouldn't be that I have to fear for my own kid's life. I have two kids, and I went through so much living in this neighborhood, that like I said, it starts small. Even if that means just giving a ticket, because you're, you're, you're putting your point across, and that's gonna deter it slowly. I'm not saying it's gonna change in one day, but like I said, I lived here five years. The dope dealers are still selling their dope, and I'm still battling with it. And I know it's two man teams, it's the Compton Sheriff's Department and the city, but we need to coordinate better to make a better city.
Well, like I said, uh, Mr. Taga, I can tell you this, we are citing individuals. We are out there towing the cars, we are arresting individuals. Um, like I stated before, you know, there's, there's twenty-two spectator sites that, that have been issued. And that's just for, just for, to get twenty, I mean, twenty-two thousand dollars back to the city. But there have been a number of arrests, there have been a number of deputy personnel who arrested people who were, uh, in, involved in a street takeover. Uh, CHP, we work with the CHP in, in unincorporated areas, in East Ratchell Dominguez, West Ratchell Dominguez. Uh, as, as far as providing those stats, at a later time, I could come back, as the chief did state a little bit later, we're gonna definitely have another town hall meeting, I'll be able to provide those stats. But for us, to provide stats in this two-week period, it would be very minimal, very minimal. That, it, it would be really nothing, really, I mean, it's something to show, but it's very minimal. You wait till after a couple of months, and after you see the results. Number one, you might not see some, some of those results, because why? They, maybe they got the message, they're not coming here. But my whole thing is this, is that we wanna continue doing what we've been doing the last two weeks, and that's being successful, eradicating that problem. One street takeover, what did occur in the past two weeks? But my whole thing is that, our men and women, uh, the Compton Sheriff's, uh, Department, with the resources that we've been given, we've been, uh, been very aggressive. We've seen that result, you may, may, you may come back, like I said, not have anything for you, because why? The street takeovers have stopped. So that's what we wanna continue to do, and that's what we're gonna do. Next question.
Hi, my name is Marie Brown, I am in the East Ratchell Dominguez area, President of the Neighborhood Watch. I'd like to, for you guys to answer this. If there were billboards at the freeway entry, because I understand that there are people coming in from Orange County to our area, if there were freeway billboards the size of the garage saying, "Warning, no rolling around in our town", it seems like if you arrest someone, they're not given a warning, they are arrested on the spot. You see what I'm saying? If we get a little bit harsher, because there were some guys that went into, and I hate to say this, but went into the ninety-nine cent store. They have these little tiny baskets, they filled the basket, two guys, on their way out, one guy says to the other one, "Let's pay". The other one say, "No, we don't have to pay, this is Compton". So we have, we have to send a message, even to those little, those little tiny crimes? We know what street they're coming from, we know what street they're on, why can't you guys do anything about that? And P.S., I do wanna say, for the last two weeks, I'm, I'm close to the seven-ten freeway. So, for the last two weeks, you guys have been very effective, we haven't heard the noise. I'm just saying, why don't we put a warning at the freeway entrance of seven-ten, one-ten, what do we have, four-oh-five, and ninety-one? These billboard signs are saying, "Don't roll around in our town, your car will be towed, and you will pay a fine if you're a spectator". We need that.
Well, Ms. Brown, uh, the sheriff's department, we don't, just let you know, we don't deal with the signs, that's not our, we deal with enforcement. So just let you guys know that we, the service that we provide is enforcement, alright? The, the city and the counties handle those type of, uh, uh, those requests or whatnot. So, with the, with, with, what I can tell you this, is that if any car that is coming here to, to perform a street takeover, you know, if we stop it, and we, we say, "Hey, this is a car that was rolling to a, a street takeover", well, there's a vehicle code violation, and we, we are conducting, uh, vehicle enforcement. So I just wanna let you guys know, when someone said, "Is there a motor officer here?", yes, we do have motors. I, I was, but like I just told you, it, it is, uh, very busy sometimes in Compton, and it, it gets tied up on other different things. But my whole thing is this, is that as you, we're gonna be committed to continue to do this, hopefully, like I said, with your help, whatever, the judicial help, with this, the city, the county, and everyone else's help, we are gonna eradicate this together. And that's what we're committed to do, that's why we're all here, that's why these cameras are here. We're committed to work this together. So I'm, I'm just wanna let you know that, this is not something that's falls on the bear's shoulders of the sheriff's department, but we are, we are gonna do it together. So I'm gonna take one more, one more question.
My name is Alan Martin. Captain, I wanna thank you for your effort, you and your lieutenants, for what you did so far since you go office.
Thank you.
You've done a great job. You have changed things here. We had issues before, big issues, but now it's getting less every single day, and you are staying on top of them. And that's something we should be thankful for. And I would really ask everyone in this room here to give us a round of applause for the captain and his adjutant. Secondly, I will emphasize one major problem. We all know it's getting less, but it's never gonna go away for one reason. A lot of the neighbors here not paying attention to the problem. The problem is not the sheriff's department itself. It's the district attorney, George Gascomo, has to go. All of you need to go online and recall him again. He is letting the crime and criminals walk away. Nobody's being charged, we've been, we've been harassed, attacked, and most of them are walking away from us. They should be in jail, they should be punished for their crime. And that's something each one of us is responsible to go after. And if you don't do your job, we're gonna stay in the same position. Town hall meeting, again, again, all for nothing. So please tell your neighbors, tell your friends, tell your cousins, everybody you know, George Gascomo is the issue, is the problem. Since you go office, crime went up one hundred percent. Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you. At this point, we're gonna conclude the town hall meeting, we appreciate it, but we're gonna stay available to, for any questions that you might have. But this, at this point, this concludes our town hall meeting, thank you for coming out.
Yo, Chief, I appreciate you supporting on that, on that First Amendment, you know, the people really, really liked that you brought that point up, you know what I mean? Because a lot of people out here think that, that we can't film, you know what I mean? They hold people accountable, but you bring it up to First Amendment, I appreciate that. And, um, they didn't let me get on the mic, but I got a question for you guys, look. If you guys could address your, um, your officers, your deputies, when they be out there with the public, bro, just to identify to the public. Because sometimes they be out there, bro, like just pulling people over for no particular reason, targeting people in Compton. Not just necessarily the street, street takeover guys, that's not even about them. You know, to me, it's more like the people they pulling over after the cause, you understand what I'm saying? Like they targeting people. They gotta use that discretion, chief, they gotta use that discretion and be like, you know what? We gotta have that discretion between the community. You understand what I'm saying? And I want you to just address your deputies out there, man, tell them to identify, bro, because I'll be out in the streets a lot, I'm a cop watcher. I'm one of them guys that be filming you guys, hold you guys accountable, and that's what you, and that's what you, and that's what you stated on the First Amendment, and I appreciate that. But just tell your deputies, man, out there, man, on your briefing, tell them to identify, bro, because a lot of us out here, bro, a lot of us out here, and I have a lot of videos, bro, where they don't identify. The first thing they do, jump in their car, blow the horn, and they take off.
We serve and expect our deputies to identify themselves.
Alright.
When they're asked to provide information, so, uh, and our deputies know that we hold them to a very high standard.
Yeah.
Great, great, great deputy, uh, who are very difficult guys.
Yeah, I just like the fact I'm walking up to you, man, because...
If we ever have any difficulty, do you ask for our supervision? We'll be doing one there immediately.
But I've done it a lot of times, chief, I'm letting you know, chief, I've done it a lot of times. I know you guys doing, I know you guys doing a lot of stuff with the community, with the street thoroughfare, stuff like that, not talking about that. I'm talking about your deputies out there. Don't target people, because this city of Compton is a good city. But don't target the people because of one individual, or a lot of individuals are making mistakes not in this city, they're not even from the city. Just, man, just, that's how you're gonna bring the community together, bro. All these people out here, they don't understand. Trust me, they don't understand, they only be, going based on whatever they live at. But when they go out there with the community, like the lowrider community, the whole count, the whole town hall meeting right here, chief, outta here now, one people complaining... out of here now, one people complaining about our lowriders. Lowriders do a lot for the community, bro. They get a lot of toy drives together for the kids. And I don't think it's fair to target the lowrider community. They're built 100,000 dollars cars, they're worth 100,000 dollars. They're not these little punk-ass little cars that you could just beat up, straight out, bro, chief.
Let me clarify that. What we're targeting is illegal activity.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter if you're a lowrider or a regular citizen.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter if you got a Toyota.
Yeah.
It's not what you drive.
Yeah.
We're targeting what you do, right?
Okay.
So if you're out there doing illegal activity, that's what we're targeting. We're certainly not going after you.
No, don't, don't, because we, we, this town hall meeting, the whole town hall meeting, bros, it was about street takeovers. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't hear, I didn't hear not one time on the whole thing, nobody talking about the lowrider community.
No, this is about a street takeover, you're right.
You know, and I didn't, and I seen the whole time on the video, people putting lowriders and stuff like that. And not one time they brought up lowriders. You know what I mean? And this is, this is the people gotta know what's really going on in that community. Because I understand about the street takeovers. I mean, I'm not gonna tell you here and I condone shit like that, that's just not cool, you know? But then, then, use that discretion, chief. I know what I'm telling you, brings the community together even stronger.
Thank you for your time.
You know what I mean? Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Alright? Here you go, guys. Right up to the chief, you know? How you doing?
Yeah, I mean, to see you. Very briefly, after the East LA community meeting, good to see you. I wanted to give you this. I'm doing some reporting about the relationship between residents in Compton and the sheriff's department.
Yeah.
It's a survey, outline you will come. We're also having a town hall on May 27th. I'd love to hear your thoughts and see you at the town hall.
You knew I'm gonna go.
Thanks, man.
You saw me, you was like, right away, huh?
Yeah, I saw you walk in, I was like, I gotta talk to you.
Yeah, but to me, it's like, you know, I'm all about filming this, you know? Like I told the chief right now, bro, look, bro, you guys targeting people now. Because people drive to Compton and you guys assuming pulling a car over because he's involved in a takeover? Not necessarily, bro. Have your deputy use that discretion out here. And if you listen to the whole town hall meeting, not one time they're about lowriders. Not one time they're about lowriders. Lowriders don't condone shit like that. A lot of people that come, they're not even from the city, bro, not even from LA, Inglewood, Compton, what? They're not even from the city. You know what I mean? So like I said, I think the people should address the situation with the street takeover. Look, I'm not gonna tell you it's okay. I'm not with that shit. You know what I mean? They could hurt my kids, they could hurt anybody, you feel me? But when you have lowrider communities, bro, that, that do a lot for the community, you guys see lowriding, they do a lot for the community, bro. Not just, you know, these little shit. So they're not targeting lowrider community, which is not even okay. You know what I mean? And a lot of people out here, man, unlucky they didn't let me get on the mic. You know what I mean? I try, you know? But I appreciate you bringing it up to town, I mean, I make sure I repost it up. Follow me on Instagram, follow me on Twitter, you know?
I got you.
You know what I'm about.
Do you know Laura Sharp at all?
No.
No?
I don't really, I don't really, like, I'm an independent person, I don't really, like, I can't, I don't know what it is. Because I have my own opinion about things, you know what I mean? Like, I'm not gonna here talk about street takeovers, because that's not my thing, you know? You don't see that on my platform, you know? I'm here about, like, targeting the community, like, lowrider community, like, they, they guys build 100,000 dollars cars. You really think they're gonna do takeovers? That's crazy. Yeah. Yeah, I appreciate y'all. Type in with me, send me a message right now, so you don't forget. Send a message and then tell me to it, you know what I mean? Whenever you post it, I mean, you see the number. You know? I'm on live YouTube right now, so. You wanna stick, I'm gonna give you a stick, you know what I'm saying? Hold it for me?
Yeah.
I'm all about kinda doing like I told, like I told the, like I told the cop right now, like, chief, I appreciate you bringing up the First Amendment, because I don't want the cops looking at me out here filming them and then they're gonna suppress my First Amendment, legally recording them, you know? Thinking that I'm gonna take over now, bro. I'm making sure you do your job right now, and make sure you don't mishandle that little gun, that little toy that you're even gonna have because of the street takeovers, you know what I mean? Because sometimes when they, that street takeover shit, they wanna come out here and suppress it even more, thinking that they're, that they're accountable. You know what I mean? You see the people, man, they tune into my stuff, you know what I mean? Like I say, man, the people don't like it, but hey. Stick around, though, stick around, you know? Look, guys, it's a community problem, man. How you doing, man? Hey, boss, I got a question. You were for the chamber?
Huh?
You were for the chamber or something like that?
President.
President, cool. I got a question for you, boss. The whole time we was in the council, I, I, my name is South Central, I filmed the, holding the carnival, right? That's what I done, man, out of there. And the whole time council meeting, bro, the whole thing they was thinking, I see you, the demeanor changed, you see that? I see that. But look, bro, I'm here, like, the whole time the council meeting was here at the board meeting, the whole time they were talking about street takeovers. I don't agree to that shit. My thing is this, on that, on that camera that they showing right there, they showing lowriders, which street takeovers. Now, my thing would be this, hear me out. I didn't hear not one time people talk about the lowrider community, right? And I see it on video right here, and I be like, man, that's like, that's like, because I, I went out there to film them, you know? And I seen how they targeted the community. Now, my thing would be this, you think that's okay?
Not lowriders, no. Lowriders are grown men.
They're not gonna spend 100,000, $100 cars to come here and take their shit, like. They don't, we don't, like, when they be out there, bro, they don't, they're not allowed people, like.
But they might drink a beer illegally, they might drink a couple of beers, that's about it.
If that. But they're not gonna go out there and burn robots and break the street, bro. So I don't understand why, like, like the chief said, like, between Santa Fe and the DMV, bro, like, that's where all of us, like, all of us come together, bro, and buy that bomb barbecue, bro, and keep the money in the community. Because most of the guy relatives right there, they live in Compton. You know what I mean? So I think, I think what would be the best way to come to the community together with the lowrider community and that? Because we don't want you guys, like, the community, to target just that community, because the, the lowrider community does a lot for the community, bro, with toy drives and stuff like that. You know what I mean? And every year, bro.
The problem with all of it, if you, if you condone it, if you condone it, somebody get killed, the city's responsible.
Yeah.
Okay? If you do it on private property, somebody get killed, the owner's.
The owner's property.
Owner's property is responsible, y'all. But that's the problem with doing stuff like that, because lowriders are no threat. Hey, baby, hello there.
Yeah, lowriders are no threat, bro. That's why, that's why I was, I was asking that point.
How you doing today? You see him, I'm waiting for you. Okay.
I'll be talking to you next time.
You got it, dawg.
And I heard you speak, I'm so impressed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just give me on the mic, man.
Huh?
Just give me on the mic, I was trying, I was trying to let everybody talk, man.
Oh, you were pointing to the guy.
I was pointing to you.
But you were pointing to the guy.
To me, to me.
Oh, look, I didn't know that, I apologize.
It's cool, man.
Next to my camera, you'll be frozen.
Alright?
Yeah, so just so you know.
A lot of people do this. Appreciate you guys, oh guys, coming in, you know? You be safe, okay?
Yeah.
I'll talk to you, okay? These girls, guys, right here, man, they are. Everybody right here, man? Oh, yeah. Check out my YouTube channel, look, I'll give you this, check it out. Check it out, man. Check out my YouTube channel, what I do for the community, man, I'm cop-wise, you know what I mean? I don't want them guys to target the community that live in Compton because they passed through the community.
Yeah.
And they shouldn't be targeted because of the dumbass takeover people, you understand what I'm saying?
What did you see, bro?
I filmed the cops, bro, I hold them accountable, they said they don't buy the people's rights.
Thank you, because you was looking out for me, man, and get the, get the, to ask the question, the mic.
Yeah, that's what I do, bro.
I appreciate you, man.
That's what I do for the community, bro, this is the community watch type of stuff, you know? I'm not gonna tell you I condone shit, and I don't, I'm not with that. You won't see none of that on my stuff.
Right.
To me, it's more about accountability. Make sure these cops, bro, not because the street takeover stuff is bringing a ticket to the city, is that gonna give them the right to harass the community and do, get away with it? That's my objective.
And I saw some lowrider, no riders ain't bothering nobody. I saw that on film, man.
Like, that's what, that's my point right there. That's my, that's my point right there. They do, they do a lot for the community, bro. They do toy drives, they do all this stuff for the community.
I ain't talking about no lowrider.
And a lot of the people from that, from that lowrider community, bro, they live in Compton.
Yeah, and they're targeted and mixed in with that shit.
That's what.
They should not.
They should not be doing that, dude. You think, you think all them people gonna spend thousands of dollars on their cars?
We just had them at Compton College, all, everybody laid out.
That's my point.
But we need to make that distinction.
Send me a message, bro. Click on Instagram, TikTok, YouTube. I'm live on YouTube right now, man. Appreciate you, boss, huh?
Uh-huh. Appreciate you too.
There you have it, guys. Council meeting, came to take a little spin. Make sure, hold accountability at its highest, guys, and, you know, there you have it. The whole meeting, they were talking about street takeovers, you know? Exactly where we're at, guys, look. You know, they were talking about the street takeover, but there is gonna be another town hall meeting, guys, that this girl walking up to me and, you know? Just messing with the community, guys, you know? It goes to Sheriff right there. What a nice vehicle you got there, huh? Yeah, guys, well, like I said, man, a lot of, a lot of the people in this meeting really precisely was talking about the street takeovers, you know? The people that, that come from other cities and come to the city right here, LA, and destroy the goddamn city, you know? To us, it's more about, you know, why you messing with the lowrider community? Guys that, every Sunday, man, we out there enjoy the bomb food, you know what I mean? Like, that's crazy. But I will post this picture up later on, guys. I'm gonna tap you guys in with this one. I'm not gonna end my live, because I know how these guys are, you know, all the time, so. You know, Channel 7 pulled up, guys? Everybody pulled up. Hey, be safe, man. Check out the channel, man. Hell, yeah. Huh? They call me good citizen.
Good citizen.
You have a good one, man.
Hey, that's good enough, good citizen.
Alright? There you go, guys, see? That guy was talking about the people and killing this, old people that been living in Compton all their life, guys, you know? They're just talking about the street takeover, and if you really think about it, man, the street takeovers, guys, are really messing up for the people that fixing up their cars, you know? They fixing up your badass ride and, and people like this, man, they're not gonna let you have a badass ride. They're gonna, you drive through Compton with a nice ride, boo, they're gonna pull you over, you're, like, that's my objective, you know? Tell the, tell the chief, and you know what? That chief guy is not suppressing my First Amendment, that's very important, guys. I mean, support that guy for not suppressing my First Amendment, you know? And him bringing it up to the camera attention, like, nah, we're not gonna suppress First Amendment, because we don't wanna pull up to the scene, guys, and, and they wanna suppress me when I'm legally recording. Suppressing my First Amendment right, you know? So. Hell, yeah, man, like I said, bro, this for the community, man. This is for my community, where I be at, where I live at, where I be at every Sunday, man. You mess with all them vendors out there, guys, all them guys that are selling on the sidewalk, street vendors, that got their little small business selling, whatever they selling, you, you messing it up for them, you know? Because every Sunday, when we, when we out there just with the lowriders, just hang, just with the lowriders, pure grown folks, you know? You're gonna suppress them, I gotta go get my barbecue chicken there, dude. I don't eat barbecue on Sundays, I'll tell you straight out. You know? And then when it's appraisal kind of stuff out there, man, it's kinda crazy, you know? So like I said, man, everybody, make sure you guys, stay tuned for the next town hall meeting, guys, in the city of Compton, man. We'll be out here, guys. Let's see. Jump into my car real fast. She's getting real, guys. Hey, you gotta make sure you guys hit the like button, guys. But like I said, man. Like I said, guys, I appreciate everybody being on here, guys. Everybody. You know, my stuff is for the people, guys. Make good awareness for the people, man, you know? Ooh, I see my car. Stay tuned, guys.